Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where our wishes stand, information under our will, and that this world with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement. Take will. Richmond schools we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. Board member Toto.
Here.
Board member Cunningham.
Here.
Board member Gillis.
Here.
Board member Schuyer.
Here.
Board member Sutton.
Here.
And board member Tuna nine here also. We have a quorum. Our student representative, Elizabeth Shaker, is absent with others, but we do have our student representative here, Joseph Zeo. Thank you. This time I'm looking for motion to approve our agenda. Some support. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Some support. Whichever one you want. Sandy or Sarah?
Sarah.
Sarah. We'll put Sarah down. Mr. Bonsley?
In your package is the personnel report. Minutes from the December 9th, January 13th organizational meeting, January 13th special meeting, the district headcount equivalents, as well as claims and accounts for December. Before I start, I just wanted to point out on the agenda for the January 13th organizational meeting, the term for board member Gillis and Steyer is listed incorrectly in the agenda. It goes through December 31st, 2030. The official minutes and backup are in there with nothing in minutes that need to be approved by the board, but I just want a correction. All that's in the form minutes. It matches the correct term. So I apologize to the two of you for the interaccuracy. There were no questions regarding any of the special minutes, claims and accounts for personnel. I would like to point out we have four new hires. Ashley Prius is going to be hired as a direct sub, building substitute, and she will then be hired as the resource room once she completes her certification, which is expected in spring, and so forth. We have a food service, Shelley Maeda, floater cook. This past Friday, Mrs. Campbell, retirement was official, Beth reaction. Her replacement is Thomas Petz. He has come to the wealth of experience in computer programming and industry field. Donovan Pickett is a new custodian that was hired. See a couple scheduled appointments, as well as some resignations from positions, as well as two terminations. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, our first presentation of the evening of this evening is our RHS Life Skills Presentation.
And Mr. York, I'll help introduce. So I think you already had a little taste of what the Life Skills Academy has to offer for most of you this evening. And so we just wanted to invite, again, the students that were able to come to share the great work that they've been doing in the Life Skills program this year. I will turn it over to Ms. Wolf. Is my presentation up here?
Thank you. So before I get started, I just want to say to the kids, I think they did an awesome job. They really did it in record time, and they made sure the orders were accurate, and they did phenomenal job. So big round of applause to you guys. All right. So most of you are probably familiar with the Life Skills classroom. What we've done is we've taken a combination of Compa, traditional academic mix, and mixed it in with life skills, which is what the kids are going to need when they leave our schools. And many of the transition programs that they are going to be going into include these types of things. So we're really just preparing them for that. They're just doing, I just can't say enough great things about how they're doing, but some of the things, some of the highlights from our classroom is we have an Adopt a Cow program through Discover Dairy. It's awesome. If you guys have not heard of it, there's new fellow teachers in the room. It's completely free. It's an amazing program. I'll be discussing that in a moment. We'll talk about our coffee cart projects, our greenhouses, our classroom grocery store, and our AccuCut laminating station. So these are some of the things the kids are doing. With the Adopt a Cow program through Discover Dairy, they're learning about the life cycles of cows, animal care, dairy production, sustainability, nutrition, technology in farming, career exploration, animal behavior and welfare. It's an amazing hands-on way to learn about dairy farming, animal husbandry, and agriculture industry, which I think is really important coming from the rural community. So those are some of the key concepts of the program. They're doing right. They get to watch their cows grow. We watched their cows from birth till now, and they've overdoubled in size. Generally, you get one cow to adopt. That's the reason they sent us two. So it's really cool. We have Borido and Tornado, and they're coming along amazing. So through this experience, they're able to do hands-on learning, sensory engagement, social skills development. They integrate with the great curriculum that they have set up for us, emotional connections, motivation, engagement, and community connections. And the dairy farm that we have actually out of Battle Creek, Michigan, it's Crandall Farms. So we have been looking for their products on shelves. We haven't really seen them. So I'm not sure if that's a West Side type thing or not. The coffee cart. So our class is participating in a business project this year, which we have named Coffee Cart. Staffs are available to place orders through the week for variety beverages, and on Fridays we deliver them to the staff. So the kids really, this is their seventh time. We usually do it every Friday, but with cap days, things come up, right? So every time they do it, they get better, and it's just amazing. So we're to the point where I can stand back. They do their thing. They check their orders. We have classroom manager. Our classroom manager has taught them all how to make the beverages. So I trained him. He trained the rest of the kids. So it was very, very cool to see. We are looking for assistant manager, so we're in the process of that right now. We hold meetings from time to time, the business meetings, just to discuss flyers, menu items, the fall and month, how much we make. Our classroom manager, he's learning bookkeeping. So the funds that we bring in and the funds that go out, he's taking care of those under supervision. So it's really great just to get them involved in this hands-on learning, and it's things that they would do if they were going to the local coffee shop and getting a job. So I think it's a great experience, plus the teamwork that's involved is just phenomenal. Did I miss anything? Oh, and their hygiene and food preparation techniques, they learned in culinary, so they brought it over to this class to use those skills, which is pretty cool. And every month we switch. So there's a prep crew, an order fulfillment crew, a delivery crew, and a cleanup crew. So they take turns doing different positions. They've also learned how to make a variety of beverages, coffee, lattes, cappuccinos, hot apple cider, and hot cocoa. And in the spring, they would like to learn how to make vodka. We're in work on that. We also do paychecks and budgeting with that project. So they earn a paycheck, and then they have to budget their money, rent, utilities, and so forth each month, and fall within that budget. And then as part of our reduced reuse recycle for our science, we're saving the coffee grounds, and we use them in our greenhouse. And then they're cleaning out, saving the pods for a variety of projects. The biggest one that they have been talking about, we haven't tried to get, is using the pods for seedlings in the greenhouse. And during the holidays, we had an add-on business where the students created etched in cricket mugs, the Coco sets. The funds made from this project will carry over to the spring project that they do, and the funds generated from that will then continue in motion. With this particular one, they learned the assembly line, the option magnet. So that was very cool. Again, this touches on the life skill development, social interaction, responsibility and independence, routine and structure, classroom community, motivation and engagement, emotional regulation. We can't get mad at each other. We take steps back, we breathe, and things are intense, which they haven't been, but they're learning how to do that. So they're learning really how to work in an environment, a work environment. So our greenhouse projects, I don't know who chose that room for us, but it's been awesome. It has a huge closet. It has a greenhouse. I mean, we literally have everything we need. So with this greenhouse, we're able to grow vegetables and spices, and the students will eventually use these in their culinary classes. We are also growing flowers for a school fundraiser in the spring, and they're learning about growing and sustaining plants. We're learning how to regenerate food from other foods. So so far, they've regenerated beans, but we're going to be incorporating potatoes and vegetables. So here is a picture of our greenhouse. I wish I had a more recent one because all of those buckets are pretty much now full. It's really, really cool to see. And we have, what was it? Dill. We have tons of dill. So if anybody needs that, we've got you covers. So our classroom, we store our own closet, which we converted to a grocery store by previous staff number. And they left everything in there, and it was amazing. So we have boxes, food, empty, milk, drugs, just various things. We also have faux food. We have a shelf section, a refrigerated section, and a frozen section, all priced and everything as if they were in a real grocery store. And we use this store to shop and budget. We play supermarket sweep. So the kids are given a task. It may be like come up with a lunch for four people, or, and if this wants to include a beverage, and you know, there's certain specifications, and the one that gets closest to the amount stays under budget by meeting the instructions when surprised, which in my room is Woollock dollars they can use in our recruiting center. And then we also train to work at grocery stores by using cash, the cash register to calculate totals and give change. And that's a big, huge one I've been working on is change and money management and how we change, how we money. So this has really helped, and the data, every month I do assessments on them, and it's getting better and better. So it seems to be doing what it's supposed to, so it's awesome. And then they also, we've got coupons for culinary. So here's a little bit of what we have in our grocery store right there. And then an AccuCut laminating station. So we have AccuCut points. If you guys are not familiar, it's like an old-fashioned cricket. So you put it under this roller, you roll it out, and it labels with letters and numbers, punches letters and numbers out, different shapes. So staff members, we put in orders for that, and the students will cut those out or laminate, and we have order forms available for the staff. They bring us our order. We do that on Mondays and Wednesdays when we return the order back to the delivery. And our classroom manager oversees that a lot as well. So that means that there's a lot to thank for our awesome program. The students, first of all. We have fabulous parents that have just been so supportive and amazing, helping train the kids and helping the kids learn how to do these various things. And just adamant for their support. You know, I bring them some crazy ideas, and very rarely have my whole bill, so I really appreciate that. And then, of course, a special thank you to the board for making these programs possible. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, but if I can, it was going to be my grave, but I just want to say that I was able a couple of weeks ago to go into Ms. Woollock's classroom. I was invited to come in, and it was a great experience for me, and it truly was one of the most welcoming, safe, inclusive, happy learning environments that I have experienced. And so we are so fortunate to have you as the teacher, your parapros that helped in the room. It's just amazing things are happening there. And Peyton and Jared were there and showed me things when I was there, as long as some other kids in the class. And it's just, it's really, really cool, and just thank you. It's really important what's happening in that classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There we go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, our next item on our agenda is our Richmond Masonic Educational Grant.
And I will welcome up to join me Mr. Zink and Ms. Churchill. This is for the Masonic Lodge grant that Ms. Churchill applied for, and she was the winner out of, I believe, with seven applicants from the district, and she was our winner. So we are going to present her with that award tonight. Wrong word. Okay.
So that one, the gray one?
No, that's the other one. Is there one responding?
It was the cover sheets for the PowerPoints.
Yeah, so there should be.
For all the community partners, Masonic, Hella, Education, teaching schools of the yard. Do I go up?
Want to speak in today?
Yeah, I can speak loud enough. You want us over here? I guess we're over here. Hi, everybody. We're from the Richmond Masonic Lodge here in Richmond, Michigan. Somebody who's heard this story before, so forgive me. Founded in 1864 here in Richmond, our lodge also consists of the former lodges in Memphis and Armada. So we're the home lodge for all three communities now. Masonry, people, you know, they've seen the Masonic symbol that we have on our shirts, for example, but a lot of people don't know a lot about who we are, what we are. But it's a men fraternal organization, and I think the best way to describe it is, everybody's heard of the shrine, the shrine circus, Shriner's Hospital. Well, you have to be a mason first before you can join the shrine, as other organizations. But that's probably the best way to explain who we are. And we're a fraternal organization, but we do a lot of outreach, too. The Grand Lodge of Michigan came up the program a few years ago that allowed us to, to the foundation, as a local lodge, to give money with limitations to certain organizations based on what we chose. And one of the things we did besides the Books for Life program, which we do with the third grade, every spring, is we also do grant programs to the three area schools. So we grant $500 grant. Teachers make an application with us, and we amongst ourselves make a decision. And this year, we chose Rachel Churchill for her project. I don't know if you'd like to tell everybody what this is about.
We dissect owl pellets. If you don't know, owl pellets are basically regurgitated digestive parts from the animals that owls eat. So we dissect it, and we reconstruct the animals that they've previously digested. And then we look at anatomical of owls and what makes them the hunters they are. So we look forward to doing that in the spring with every sixth grader, not just my sixth graders.
The staff behind you are like with our lodge tonight is Keith Trocken. And Lance Spizzo, Judy Sung. You have to get that. And Lance is the worshipful master of our lodge this year. That's like being president of the lodge. So Lance, if you'd like to make the presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we get a picture in front of the screen over there, so I get it in the background?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, our next item on our agenda is our L and L Educational Foundation Grant recipient.
And to tell us more about this grant award is Ann Kunder.
Okay. I, before the meeting started, a couple pictures there just so you could get a feel about what's going on with the grant in the classroom. I'd like to thank L and L Products for their generous grants that they provide communities. I've received one from them three times now. And this last grant, I received $11,500 from them, which is astounding. And with that grant, it's being used to implement the agricultural curriculum in my steam classroom in the sixth grade at the current time. And with that grant, we purchased a greenhouse, which will be put together this spring. So the goals with that is to, the students will be growing flowers and vegetables, and then I'm hoping to start a farmer's club, so that starts in February. And I'm hoping that will then go on into the summer, and I'm hoping that maybe we can have like a little produce stand type thing, which is still for the summer. Other items that were purchased, you've seen the picture there, there's their hydroponics system. I have two of them. One has four rows of columns, as they call it, another one has eight. The four column one will grow flowers, and the eight one will have vegetables. I also purchased an aquaponics system from them, and we'll be growing herbs with that. So all of those different things combined, the students will be comparing how plants and flowers grow differently in different environments. One of the big focuses that we're using is the National Agricultural Classroom Classroom Curriculum, which focuses on having students have the agricultural literate going forward, what they call a journey 2050 about being food sustainable in the future, and how things like hydroponics and aqua products can increase the production of food in areas that don't have good soil or water and those types of things. So the, one other picture I just want to mention there is that ties into what we're doing in the classroom as a picture. You see students there are pollinating flowers, and that was one of the things that we have a grow light, and we have a pollination kit that I purchased. That was through the Richmond Education Foundation. And students are actually able to see what it looks like to pollinate. So just reading it in a book or looking at a video, they actually, at first, they were grossed out because they're dead bees. And they make bee sticks, and then, once they glue them on a stick, then they pollinate by brushing up against the pollen, and then, which was really neat about it, you could hear kids say, oh my gosh, that's what it looks like, because they could see the pollen on the bee. So it's kind of, but all right. So that was a good experience. So I'm looking forward to second semester, when all those other things are going to start rolling and going forward with it. So again, I appreciate L and L Products. They're a fantastic company, and I hope that the partnership between us and Brant Recy will continue. So there are any questions?
Well done.
And I just wanted to thank you for applying. When they came here a couple of years ago, just stuck your neck out and let's figure something out, and they've been a partner ever since, so thank you. And then for the previous presentation, just again, did they say seven applicants?
Yes.
That's probably the most they've ever gotten out of here, so that's really good.
Next item on our agenda is our Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union Grant recipient.
Okay. And for this one, we're going to invite out this Amanda Trippin to tell us about her.
This fall, I applied for the Michigan Schools and Government Grant. I did it last year as well, and I was a winner then. This year, I wanted flexible seating, so I applied. And the way that it works is students and community members get to vote. So I put it out on Facebook, and I had all the kids do it. They got all excited, which is fun, because then they can see what we're doing. They really were excited about this one. So I got $750 to get some new seats, or to add on to the seats that we already have. So I bought three beanbed chairs for small group things that the kids can sit in around the room, or when we're reading, they can sit around the room. I got four wobbly stools, which they love. They have to trade them out every day. They have to like sign up for them because they all want them. But those have worked out really well. There's no more tipping in chairs, so no cushions in my room. And then I had enough for 24 kick fans to go on the bottom of the chairs, and then 24 of the like wobbly seat cushions. So every kid in my room basically has an option to move, like to move during learning time without it being disruptive or distracting for other kids. So the kids are more engaged, they're excited, it kind of creates a nice atmosphere and community in the classroom. So there they are enjoying it.
Could I just say something about that? So when I went to a conference, the Schoolwork Conference, I sat in a session where they talked about like a lot of the districts are moving towards like different seating of classroom furniture, and there's a lot of research that the kids are being more engaged. I love that, see that that's happening here, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you again. Next item on our agenda is Positive You.
And for this one, I'm going to turn it over first to Mr. Knight, and I think he will introduce the rest of the guests that he invited from Positive You and our staff that also is part of the program here at the middle school. Nice.
Hello, everybody. So just want to briefly just talk about this program that we have embarked on for this school year. I did invite our founder of the program, Mr. Kenny Spear. He's going to talk a little bit more in detail about what it's announced in the program and how it's working here at Richmond. But I did want to kind of talk about just a little bit of how the journey began, of how we decided to make a choice to go with this kind of program for our school. When Ms. Merrill and I took over these positions here, it's already been two years, we knew that we needed to make some kind of shift in terms of where our culture was at within our building and within just everything that was going on at our middle school. So there were three things that we really wanted to focus on, and that was our integrity, our pride, and our compassion. Our integrity, we wanted to make sure that we put the kids first and made choices in the best interest of the kids. We wanted everybody to be prideful, from the staff, to be proud about where they're at and proud about what they're doing. And we wanted people to care, to be compassionate. We feel like if we have those three things in place, everything else should fall into place. So that was our goal initially with our staff the first year, and we felt like we did a pretty solid job with that, and then we wanted to push it on to the students as well. And then this Positive You program came along that I hijacked from Romeo Public Schools, because I have a friend over there. But again, it's about a shift in mindset for kids so that they can feel good about being at school and feel good about being themselves. This is, so this is a mentorship program primarily based for middle school age kids. So it primarily focuses on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and that's who our target is, although we are going to be feeding this into the lower grades hopefully in the future as well. We do have a RMS Leadership Club that Mr. Kenny is going to talk about as well, and we're grabbing that, and that's with our eighth grade, that we hand-selected a group of students, all from different cultures and identities and different just backgrounds. And it's been very, very impactful, and he's going to talk about that, too. So at this time, let me get Mr. Kenny Spear to come on up here and help.
Thanks. Good evening, board, parents. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate your sacrifice and your time. and your time. Thanks Jennifer and Paul for having us, we appreciate it. So my name's Kenny Speer, I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Positive You. We are a high school emotional intelligence curriculum that we provide throughout, primarily throughout Southeast Michigan, but we're starting to expand throughout the state. Oh, thanks, man. Teamwork.
Teamwork.
Yes, see it up there here. My background's actually in substance abuse prevention, so I've worked for a handful of different organizations before when we started Positive You in 2017. I've worked as a youth speaker for an organization called Face Addiction Now. I worked as the Director of the Regional Youth Initiative and I also worked as the Outreach Development Coordinator for the Alliance Coalition of Healthy Communities in Oakland County. And in 2017, I remember as I was writing curriculum for a particular organization, I came across a video. And in this video, it was like a clickbait type YouTube video, it said, "Everything you think you know about mental health and addiction is wrong." And I've been doing this for a couple of years, so I'm gonna click this, see what it says. And so, the video was by a guy named Johann Hari, he's actually the author of a book called Chasing the Screen. And in it, he outlines the idea that, there was a study done in the 1920s, and in the 1920s, they put a rat in a cage, you guys can try this at home if you have any rats. They put this rat in a cage and they put substance water as well as regular water in this cage. And what they concluded is that if the rat chose to use the substance at any point, it would inevitably use it excessively and 100% of the time would overdose and die. And so from this study, it was really in the 1950s, the Just Say No slogan took off. Are you guys familiar with the Just Say No slogan?
Yes.
So this had been propagated into the early 2000s and it wasn't until the 1970s that another professor, Professor Alexander, came along and asked a simply upfront question, which is, what else was in the cage? And there was nothing in the cage, so this specific professor went on to create what's known as Rat Park. And it's everything that you would imagine Rat Park to be, there was, you know, tunnels and colorful balls and other rats to play with, things to chew on and other rat stuff that rats like. And they also put the regular water as well as the substance water. And what they concluded is that even though the rat, at random of course, chose the substance water, it went from a 100% overdose rate to a 0% overdose rate. In other words, the rat had found a sufficient substitute, it found something that announced itself as more meaningful. It had connection, togetherness, and conviviality, it was doing something that was meaningful. And so, in 2017, I left that organization, I went on to create what's known as Positive You, and we wanted to flip that idea on its head and realize it's not about saying no to bad decisions for kids, it's about giving them something better to say yes to. And so we've all run a purpose recognition curriculum, it's 30 weeks, every single week from October until May, your students have been getting a video sent to them with a weekly challenge in order for them to really reorient themselves toward purpose in their life. And so we've been able to do that effectively and we've also been running focus groups every single week for the last 18 weeks. We're actually currently in our discipline series in January, which has been fun. And so, we're able to really build connections with kids and provide them that sufficient substitute to poor decisions. And it's been great. And I'll tell you guys this, and I mentioned this to your staff already, Richmond is the last of a dying breed, it's one of the last real communities that we have left. And it's important, we need communities, we need that integral structure for our kids to thrive, and you guys have it here. And so being able to protect that and cultivate that, super important for the benefit of your kids. And so kudos to you guys for showing up and making the sacrifice and being here, and same to the parents, it's really powerful stuff. So, every single week, we're able to meet in the classroom for 30 minutes during lunchtime, Mr. Morell's like, he's been joining us for a focus group before. And we also have a Positive You champion of Brandon Day, who's joined our focus groups as well, so he's able to be a part of it and see how we're able to provide the impact to our young people. We're taking pre and post survey data to really measure the emotional intelligence of our kids. And the big idea is, you know, it's not about taking kids from bad to good, we wanna take kids from good to great, to great to exceptional and have them thrive. We provide a handful of services from focus groups to the videos as well as professional development, parent nights and student assemblies, so all Richmond middle school is going to be able to be impacted by that this year. And then beyond that, we look to provide a continuum of care for elementary schools and high school as well. So, we're really grateful to be a part of it and I know that, we got Coach Day, he's gonna come up and share a couple of things too, by his experience as the champion, and we'll let him jump in.
Weekly, he's a hard act to follow. I've never been to a Taylor Swift concert, but if he wants, why the cafeteria? You would've thought Taylor Swift was in the cafeteria, the kids would go nuts. My role, I guess, is, you know, Ms. Morell, we sat down in the summertime, you talked to me about they're doing this and what a rewarding role. I get to eat lunch with, I've had multiple groups of three to four kids, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and share my fifth hour during the lunch periods with them and just the growth and the kids opening up to us and talking about, you know, what they like about school, what they dislike about school. I think, you know, 20-plus years as an educator, unless kids feel comfortable, we're not gonna get them to learn anything. And what I've found is, you know, I can ask the kids, like, hey, is there an adult here that you trust? Is there an adult here that you think has your back? And I can say, you know, being here 20-plus years, our kids, you know, Kenny's great and the program he's brought is amazing, but they love Ms. Morell and they love Mr. Knight, like they are comfortable, they're not, they have someone they can reach out to. So, it's great to see, you know, male or female, I've had, you know, five or six different groups now. And we start week one and the kids are three, they're lunching, they're quiet, and by week three, man, they're with kids maybe that maybe aren't their social group, and we're talking about our weekend and we're joking around and they're opening up about things that irritate them and they're opening up about things that they're excited about. And to see the growth, and like I said, Kenny with the videos weekly, it is, for me, it's the, we've tried other things, this is by far the most impactful thing we've done, because he's, Kenny's sincere, the kids can see that, right? They're not fooled, you know, by people that come in and talk and don't have their best interests. Ms. Morell and her, when they leave us and they go to her, she's sincere, or Mr. Knight, same thing, like they know it's not fake, they know it's not phony. And for me, as a person who, like I've never done anything like this before, I, to me, it's been extremely rewarding as a professional, because we're seeing the, you know, maybe I coached kids before, I had in the classroom, these are kids that maybe aren't athletes or maybe, you know, they're new to the school and you can see, you know, that light bulb flick on and they're like, I'm comfortable here, I'm comfortable. So now that I'm comfortable, I'm gonna go out and I'm gonna get involved in something. And I'm gonna, we had a donut party the other day, donuts and juice and just listen to them talk about how to make our school environment better. Kids, a lot of them had no interaction with them before, like it, just awesome, awesome experience and I hope we continue to do it and it grows and spreads out even more, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, a few weeks ago, actually it was now a few months ago, I walked into the cafeteria during one of the lunch hours and there were a group of girls that were sitting at a table right when you first walk in, they're like, oh hey, Ms. Morell, hey, girls, how's it going? Guess what? We get to have lunch with Mr. Day starting tomorrow, I'm so excited. I'm like, oh my gosh, did you have class with Mr. Day too? You know, do you, like, how do you know Mr. Day? Well, I mean, we know he's a coach and we know that he's a teacher, but we get to have lunch with them and they were super, super excited. And to see students who normally wouldn't engage with the wrestling coach or the boys' PE teacher, it was, it was really exciting to see, because the excitement in their eyes was, was just something that you can't, you can't force that. That's something that was so genuine and they were truly excited about, about having, being able to be in one of Brandon's groups. And it was pretty impactful for those girls too. When I was first introduced to Positive You, I was working in a different school district. And I've already had this conversation with Kenny, at one point, I was not sold. It was a tough sell for me, I was an elementary school principal, just out of the classroom, and thinking to myself, well, how in the world is this gonna help, you know, my kids? Because they're little, they're not really eligible for this program yet. And then I saw that, I saw the program in action in that district, which is really struggling. And to see kids showing growth in a district where it's not as easy to do is pretty remarkable. So then when we were able to bring Positive You here to Richmond and see our kids thriving even more than they already were, is very, very exciting as well and we're only hoping that it will continue to grow. You know, like Mr. Knight said, our biggest goal when we first started was to help improve the culture. Not that the culture was bad, it was just, we needed a shift. We needed to, we needed to make some changes because we needed to have a staff who wanted to be in our building, we needed to have students who wanted to be in our building. And we believe in the last two and a half years, that we are really well on our way to doing that. We know that if our kids are not, if our staff does not want to be here, our kids are gonna pick up on that. If our students don't want to be here, they're not gonna learn. And what we're noticing is our kids are really excited about being at school. Our staff loves being at school, we have a pretty good attendance rate, which is, which is exciting, because that's not always easy to have. And so, you know, we are working really diligently and we're really hoping that we can continue with this program, because we are seeing the benefits. And with some of the groups that we have coming up, some of the challenges that we know that we're gonna face is some of these children get a little bit older, based on what we're seeing now, we need to be able to pull out all the stuff. So we're really excited about moving forward with Positive You. And we're really grateful to Kenny and his crew, because like Brandon said, these guys walk into the building and they're like rock stars. So it's a lot of fun to watch how excited our kids are. So, thank you so much for your time. Anybody have any questions?
I was just gonna add that I was able to attend the digital detox for the parent night during the conference last year. That was my first presentation and it was amazing, it was amazing. I had wished there were so many other parents, it really honed in on the whole addicted to the digital world and I did tell my kiddos along with me and they learned a little bit too, so I reference back to that quite often.
That's great.
About balance and, you know.
Absolutely.
So it really gave a lot of tools. So even from the front, what you guys can provide for our parents, it was educational.
Thanks. We hope to be able to continue that. Are there any other questions?
Yes, I just wanna catch Brandon. Brandon, do you meet once a week with a group?
So, I meet Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Fridays, I forgot to say, Fridays, I go in and I told Mr. Knight, I'm like, if you're old, like I'm like Arsenio Hall in the lunchroom, right? We take what, the video that Kenny, you know, has given and I, I meet with them at lunch and I ask questions and I walk around and they have a microphone and the kids give the responses and they love it, they love it.
So does the group change? So does the group change then every week?
Yeah, every couple of weeks.
And how do you pick, or how does it determine who's in your group, or who you have that week?
So we did an exercise during one of our PDs called silent mentoring. We had teachers walk around and we put sticky notes on all the kids' lockers, we put pictures on all the kids' lockers, sticky notes on kids' lockers that they had a relationship with that wasn't academic, so they knew something about their whole life. So it was eye-opening, I know we got a few of our staff here that were with us. It was eye-opening for a lot of people to see how many kids had no sticky notes. So those kids that had the no sticky notes, we made a huge list of those, it wasn't a ton, but about 30 kids. That's, we're pulling from those kids and then mixing them with other kids that are involved into other clubs and in different groups like that, so it's kind of a mixture of those kids kind of getting with those kids.
And we're trying to really intermix social groups of students that we recognize have definite social groups, so that they can experience other friends and make other friendships and make other relationships with other kids, even if it's just a collegial one and not, doesn't even have to end up in a, you know, in a tight friendship, but then they get to know people better, so, which is always a good, it's always a good, it's a good thing.
And I just wanna say, someone who's been around a very long time, the culture is different in that building because the two of you are at the top. That is just a fact, anybody that's been around. And this is so exciting and just, you had, a couple meetings ago, you, somehow you came and you told us about those sticky notes.
Somewhere.
And I remember thinking, wow, you know, as a teacher, you're right, you have your group of kids, but there might be a kid I don't know anything about, how did that happen? You know, and it just, it happens because life happens and you're busy and all of that, but to focus on, that's where kids, that's where culture's different and that's where I wanna come to school, because a teacher that might not have ever said hello to me is all of a sudden saying, "Good morning" to me, "How you doing?" or whatever, and you are the leaders of that and thank you so much.
We appreciate that. And part of the silent mentoring piece too, which I wanna give kudos to our teachers that stepped up with that too, because we essentially assigned like three students to each teacher and these teachers are doing some, like checking, like silent mentoring checking. It could be just a simple hello, good morning, nice shoes, like how you did your hair, like simple things like that. Those simple things make a huge, huge difference. And we had almost our entire staff volunteer to do that, that it wasn't something that they had to do. Nearly our entire staff, which was like that, that made my heart.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, you should've seen, so the less of the blubbering idiots over there. Ms. Taylor, do you have a question?
It was kind of to follow up with Deb, so you kind of already answered it, I wonder how the kids were chosen, but how many kids would you say are gonna be affected by this throughout the middle school in a year?
So, in the leadership group, there are...
Eighteen, about eighteen, so.
Yep. So that's just in the leadership group. And what we did was, Brandon was talking about the donut party, one of the things that we focused on and the questions that were asked of the students in that leadership group, so what are some of the things that you are talking about during Positive You? And kids would answer and they would raise their hands, how are we gonna get this out to the rest of the student body? And one of our kids, one of our students, Lane, although she was amazing, she's very concerned about this, because she is so excited about what's happening and she wants to, it was almost like she was asking for permission to start kind of spreading the word. And so, through, hopefully through some conversations and students talking with other students, it's gonna be kind of a natural effect that's gonna trickle down. However, with the small groups that we have with Brandon, there's five, six kids?
I've got nine right now.
Right.
Nine right now and we, so we'll end up, oh, probably thirty kids total by the end of the year.
So the idea is that that group then plucks into next year's group, right? It's in terms of the leadership groups, because now they're more accustomed to that smaller environment. So that would be like our idea, our big goal for...
Paul, can we just add, like every student sees the weekly video.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Great, great, everybody sees the video.
And every student has an opportunity to meet the weekly challenge and there's prizes given out and...
So that's where the Fridays come in, like come in lunchroom, we talk, we're discussing the video.
So then, with each week, there's a weekly challenge and Andrew was just asking me this question. So then, all of the children who complete the challenge, their names get put into a hat or a bucket or whatever, and then we give Positive You swag out and stuff.
Can you give an example of what a challenge might be? What would be an example of one of the challenges?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, well, some of our easier challenges, well, we're in discipline month now, so one of the things that we had them do, we said, if you don't have discipline, you will get discipline. That was week, that was week three discipline. So we wanted to ask them specifically, what are some areas in their life that they have discipline and what areas of their life they would need more discipline in? So they would write those three things down for each side they'd submit, that would be an example of one of the challenges we do.
And I guess with my, two sort of kind of follow-up from what you guys have said, is the opportunity, the day that I got to be in the small group, this isn't about teaching kids someone else's prescribed message, it's about having them internalize and think and reflect on their own and how they set their own personal goal, what's achievable to them. You have some kids that will go, you know, Gold Star or whatever, but there are some kids that just need that little bit and it's the positive reinforcement, whether it's the staff with the silent mentoring, or whether it's Brandon, "Brandon, thank you for taking the chance on the meet, and when I came and offered you the, kind of, that's what we're looking at, based on their vision," or, you know, just the videos, it really puts students in control of the choices they're making. And that's what we're trying to do, is you have a choice here, it's not, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but you have a choice, so. And the day that I happened to be in there, I asked, I asked Paul, I go, how did these kids, I'm looking around the room and they were... did these kids, I'm looking around the room and they were a diverse group of kids. It wasn't your star athletes, it wasn't your all A students, it wasn't your kids that are the social butterflies. It was a lot of people. And I know some of the people that are, the kids are in it, and I put them in other groups like the Roderans over, and they're talking about this at home. So it is having an impact on the culture, so thank you.
How do you feel in your building? Are you seeing an effective discipline all, attendance at all?
I was going to ask, when did, when, when did this program actually get started?
So it technically started, we just kind of pushed it in last spring when we did the, during the parent teacher conferences, we did the digital detox. That was like the toe.
Gotcha, okay. Cause I know, just kind of off of what your question was, I've noticed as a board member, a lot less disciplinings that come to us.
Oh, for sure.
So I was just curious also if that is on your...
Our referrals are way down. I'm not saying that this is why, but this definitely is a, is a piece in the puzzle for sure. Our suspension, we'll have numbers. Once, once we can say end of school year, we'll have a little bit more.
You were saying that you're doing some kind of evaluating?
Yeah, we're pre and post and then we're also evaluating the attendance on a weekly basis. So what we'll do is we'll actually have a semester to report that they're going to get within the next few weeks and then we'll have a second semester report. So because of, I think it's workbar or there's some sort of limitations in terms of what we can access to the grade. We'll take that, that information from the attendance and then we're actually tracking the kids with the pre and post survey and we'll line that up with their grades and the referrals at the end here so you guys can report.
Oh, perfect. Very nice.
So the Positive You is a separate program from the silent mentoring, but they work with each other?
Yes.
Okay. I was just...
Yes.
That's how we identified the kids that were, that maybe needed those extra supports because they didn't have somebody to connect to. So that helped in some of the decision-making for us law process to pull out for Positive.
And as part of our survey that went out, that was some of the questions we asked of the kids about who to identify with. We even asked parents, is there someone in the school that you're trying to identify that wasn't on last year's survey? So...
Does this become part of our school improvement?
Yes, because it's, it will be reflected because of the, there's cultural questions and so we talk about the different pieces that are, so it's, it's a whole thing, but it is part of that culture portion of it.
Nice, very nice.
Last thing I want to say, but coming from just the mental health background, I love all of this. This is like wonderful. It's giving me a lot of ideas I want to like steal and break in my own work. So this is great. And I might be kind of reaching out to get some more information. So this just sounds really awesome. So good luck.
I'll make sure to get my guys.
Please, yes.
Start by following him on Facebook. I followed you probably four years ago, I think. Four or five years ago or four years. And the stuff you see on there inspires you to do that, the next step. So it's good stuff.
I love the self-reflection empowerment, self-mastery, like all of it is great. It sounds really awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is our Board of Education Appreciation Month recognition.
So before I start, I just want to do, the common theme was our community involvement. Last four presentations and as you know, many that we've had previously, we could not do this without student partnerships, whether it's these financial supports or programs like Kenny's brought in. So I want to thank everybody here for that aspect and those that have already left. We truly do appreciate that community involvement aspect. This month, we recognize the incredible contributions of our seven board members here for what they do for our students each and every day with School Board Appreciation Month. And oftentimes with the organizational meeting, it's also, we don't celebrate it beginning, but it's kind of a culmination of what you guys do in totality. The community, I both know that you play a vital role in shaping the success of our students, whether it's setting policy, setting financial expectations, hiring, curriculum adoption, et cetera. You set the, the framework of our district. And for that, every student here and staff and I are much appreciative of that. In fact, the recent years, we've been the recipients of two bonds in thirteen and nineteen that our community has invested with us and entrusted with us. And those two bonds, which I've had the opportunity to be part of, I can, I can say this board has been very fiscally responsible, looking out for the community's best interest and making sure that the dollars that they've entrusted to the board are spent wisely and in the right spots. So I'm deeply appreciative of your commitment, your diversity, your diverse perspectives. I think since I've been here, I've worked with several board members, each one coming to the table from a different perspective. But the commonality is you want the best for our students, our staff and the district. And I can say, as Kenny echoed here, we have a great school system and it starts with the leadership at the top. So I appreciate it and thank you for that. So with that, I would ask you to come up, small token of our appreciation for your time. There is a basket, in the basket are various gifts from schools and departments. In your backup, you'll see the list of what each department has provided you. And always amazing the kinds of uniqueness and the creativity they come up with. So as we start, alphabetical order, Candace Cunningham. Thank you very much. Sandy Fortuna. What do I do as members? I'm Harvey Kelt. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize your student board, though they're not elected officials, they do play an important role in the conversations that occur at this board table. We have two student reps, fortunately, two student reps, Joseph Peseo and Elizabeth Chapert, who's not able to be here with us. But when they look at their role and their advocacy for the student body, they bring a perspective that doesn't often reach the board table. And sometimes we think we know what the kids want and say, but this gives them an opportunity to also share and get their perspective and outlook on things. So for them, I would like to thank both of them for taking a leap and putting in the application and applying to be student board rep, having sat on the interview committee. It's not an easy process and this is, I think, we have many applicants this last one. And I hope in the future as they move on to bigger and better things, they'll take the skillset that they've learned here and the ability to look at different things from different perspectives into their, their future goals. With that, Joseph, thank you for... Sorry, I didn't put their picture up. So on behalf of the entire district, we'll foreshot work that's here. I want to thank you for your hard earned dedication and countless hours you put in. Oftentimes what the community doesn't see is all the behind the scenes stuff. So thank you.
Yes. I know, that's a real picture. I know, it's something you heard. It sounded a bit dangerous. I know. That's a true picture.
You don't remember when we did that?
No. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You don't say your name.
Okay, sounds great. Bye.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. I'm just going to pick, first one is Danielle.
I'm good tonight.
Okay. Barbara.
I did my thank you.
Sarah.
I do not have anything tonight.
Okay. Candace.
I'm good.
Sandy.
I'm just going to quickly rave real quickly about the life skills presentation and my hot chocolate is terrific. It was delivered, it was a pleasant conversation with the delivery person, it tastes good, it's the perfect temperature, so thank you so much. Good job.
Brandon?
I will second every bit of that. That was pretty awesome. I thought there was a lot of great presentations and a lot of great things happening. I think especially related to the, you know, the farming, they adopt the cow, I think that is an awesome thing. I got a farmer background, so it's got a special place for me. A lot of great things. And I also want to highlight that, something I saw on the Richmond Community Schools Facebook page today about Claire Reinhardt, a freshman that was performing at the high school All State Band. So that was really awesome. That's, that's pretty cool. So I just wanted to highlight that as well.
Hey, I just want to share two things. This weekend, I sat in on the CNC training that took place with our robotics students. And it was done by a graduate of ours, Nick Mathis. And he did a, like a brief intro to talk to the kids from our robotics team. And what he told them, it amazed me because he said, the skills he learned in our robotics program, he is using now on his job. So he's, he really stressed with them, you know, what you're doing here will apply and you can use in the future. So it was a great presentation. I learned how our, how our CNC machine works. Never seen it before, it was pretty cool. And then my second one, I also attended the middle school volleyball. They had, Sunday, they had a tournament. Charlotte West ran it, it went really smooth, the kids had a great time. It was just really nice to see. They walked away with their little medallions, so nice job.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our student board rep. Joe, you have it all tonight?
All righty, let's do it. We'll start with elementary school. There was an after-school childcare program last week that had an absolute blast with a glow-in-the-dark party, which it was an idea proposed by Ms. Christina Blanco. We would like, on behalf of the students, like to thank her for such a great idea. Students had a wonderful time, really enjoyed it. The Lee Student Council is selling cementels to spread some kindness and cheer. We'd like to just send out a reminder to parents and students that, you know, make sure they submit their slips to the student's teacher before this Friday, the 31st. The Lee Elementary recognized honesty at the PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Support Assembly. Two students from each class were recognized for showing honesty throughout their time here in class. We also had a competitive cup stacking challenge, which, you know, I'm not very good at, but it sounds like a lot of fun for sure. Move on to the middle school. Finals are currently being finished up as well as mid-year NWA testing for all students. I love that. On Monday, January 20th, RMS teachers participated in a very informative professional development session based on standard-based grading. On behalf of the students, we'd like to thank Mrs. Sispaniak and Mrs. May as they continue to better meet the needs of our education. We really appreciate it. Ms. Morella and Mr. Knight, we'd like to thank our students and staff for a fantastic first semester. On behalf, on the, of the, on behalf of the students, we would like to thank them as well for a wonderful first semester. I know you had touched on it as well, the volleyball tournament that was at this Sunday. I as well attended that. It was wonderfully ran. We'd like to give a shout out to Coach Charlene West. And there were also some high school athletes who as well not only helped participate in the event, but coached and refereed the event. And it was really interesting to see that association between our high school athletes and our younger athletes. It was, it was truly a wonderful experience and I was really glad I got to go. High school, our Snowcoming Spirit Week starts today and will continue throughout to the end of this week. Today's Spirit Week was pajama day, tomorrow will be black light day, Wednesday will be meme day, Thursday will be eighties day, and, yeah, there you go. And Friday will be blue and white day. The Snowcoming Dance is Saturday from seven to nine thirty. And our CTE Awards Breakfast is next week on Friday, February 7th, at Macomb Intermediate School District, where we will be honoring two seniors, Cameron Moore and Jared Haynes, for their academic success in our CTE programs. On behalf of students, we would like to congratulate them as well. Theater tryouts for this year's musical will be hosted in the high school auditorium on the third and fifth of February. If students are interested, they will need to be prepared to sing, act, and a new audition piece of material this year, learn a small dance routine. Yes, I will be singing and dancing. And it'll be, it'll be a whole lot of fun for sure. Students, students will be provided a little dance routine that they have some time to memorize and then they are there to perform it on the day. I, I don't remember, I believe it's the fifth is the dance routine and Monday, that February 3rd is everything else. I could have them backwards. I'll get that to you as soon as possible. But regardless, it's there, it's going to be exciting for all those interested. I'd like to talk a little bit about sports to wrap this up. Regular seasons are winding down for winter athletics, primarily specifically in the middle school. Our winter sports like cheer and basketball proceed to continue as we finalize the winter season. Wrestling hosted their annual team tournament Saturday and went four and oh. Congratulations. Varsity cheer has won the past two B-WAC jamborees and looks up to lock up the league title on Wednesday. Congratulations to them as well. As mentioned previously, Friday is snow coming in terms of the game. JV girls will play Almont at four thirty, followed by varsity girls at six and varsity boys at seven thirty. Snowcoming court members will also be announced at the halftime of the varsity boys game. We are hosting three NHSAA tournaments, events this year. Those events being, it's Saturday, February 8th, the individual wrestling, wrestling districts, the start time is nine thirty AM. Saturday, February 15th, the cheerleading districts, the start time is two PM. March 5th, 7th, and, or 3rd, 5th and 7th for girls' basketball districts. Times are to be determined, it's a month away, but as brackets have not been drawn yet, we'll get to those as soon as possible. That wraps it up for us on behalf of the students. We're just, we appreciate the ability to have experienced a great first semester and are excited to finish up the year.
My question. What's the music? Ah, that's my question.
Blonde.
Oh, thank you. That's right.
Yeah, yeah. For those who are unaware, a young blonde girl is...
Don't legally blonde at this time.
On this day, I mean, for those, as a...
But this is not...
Well, it's not only, it's not only just open to you guys, we'd like to open it up to the students. The more engagement we can get for the...
Sorry, I just...
Yes, of course. You know, we have our sports team and our sports games, but you know, we present these to the whole district and the whole community for anybody, whether that be you guys or students who may also not be familiar. But yeah, blonde girl, you know, in the time we look in for a great future endeavor and she chooses to by going to Harvard Law School and, you know, you get to watch as she triumphs through her great challenges throughout the play or the musical. I wouldn't go in too much depth, but yeah, there it is, that's what it is.
Well, my question is, what do you think your dancing abilities are going to be?
Oh, geez. Oh, well, let me be honest. My fair share of dancing comes from high school affiliated dances and I would not call that in any way professional. And elementary school musical I did where I pretended to be, I remember if it was the Constitution or the Bill of Rights.
The Bill of Rights.
Where I...
I think it was.
Yes, I do remember.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I, I appreciate that because I do remember. You were helping direct that and providing some insight. But yeah, other than that, I mean, I'm as confident as I can be. I cannot confirm or deny whether, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see on the day. But yeah, super excited then.
And when is the show?
The show will be sometime in, I think, yeah, like the first, I want to say the first week, but it's sometime in April.
Anybody else have any other questions for Joe? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update, Ms. Bronson.
I'm going to start legislatively. We're kind of watching the transition of, between the Democratic control...
Anybody else have any other questions for Joe? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update, Ms. Bronson.
Uh, I'm gonna start legislatively. We're kinda watching the transition of, between the Democratic-controlled legislature to the Republican in the House. Uh, there were several bills that were passed in December under lame duck, particularly PA 152, which is regarding employee health. Those bills, um, have not been turned over to the governor for signature, so there's a, uh, constitutional crisis or question going on there regarding the legitimacy. But, um, they were passed and the, it says they have to go to the governor within some days for her review or if she doesn't sign it, then you go up the long center. But, um, they never made it over, so we're watching that. And the reason why we're watching that is the current legislation that was passed would have an immediate budget impact on every district. Um, it would change the per, the hard cap requirements immediately for districts, so that would be, uh, just, sorry, the new expense that wasn't even planned for, for this year. So, um, stay tuned for that. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of legislation going on, um, at the state level. From a district level, um, because of the inclement weather days last week, the, and the exams, semester one ends tomorrow, Jan, uh, January 28th. So by the end of the week, I believe Friday, folders, the middle, or elementary report cards are going out because they don't do exams, they're a little ahead of the middle school and high school. And by beginning part of next week, um, report cards would mail home to families. And we do that at the semester break because we are issuing credits at that point. So this would be, is a way that we can make sure parents have that information, especially if they have students that are lacking the credits. The community newsletter went out to, um, several households over this break in the middle of January. In it, it talks about the board's action, um, from December about considering, I can say that word because we have not authorized to go for a bond, but consider it. So I just wanna remind the community, and there'll be more communication that goes out. On Tuesday, February 22nd, the community conversation will host, be held at the Richmond Middle School. Uh, on Tuesday, the 18th, it'll be at the high school, and on Monday, the 21st, all of these are in the newsletter, but will also be public, will be at the elementary school. The focus of these is talking about the need and purpose for upcoming bond, as well to gather parent and community input on what they would like to see in the bond. And the intent is for, uh, my office to gather some information and come back to the board with a presentation in, um, May regarding, um, putting it on the ballot on the board to then actually consider it at that point. That's all I have.
Any questions, Ms. Bronson? Okay, next item on our agenda is item of interest from the board. First one, Sarah. Candace?
Uh, Danielle.
She's the head house. Um, Raymond?
I'm good, thank you.
Sandy?
Nope, I don't have anything to say.
Margaret?
I just have a question, and it's really with Sarah and Raymond. Did everybody get that email from MASP about the voting for the delegates? So you, so you are out, okay. I don't know if it happened. But I guess my question is, I don't remember. It talks about you're supposed to let your superintendent's administrative assistant know. Is this where we do one vote from the board, or do we each vote?
Yeah, so what will happen is that the first meeting in February, we'll bring that to the board for discussion.
So it is a group vote?
Then at the second meeting in February, you'll give the direction of how you want that vote to be cast. And then Cynthia will submit it on behalf of whatever the board decides on.
Okay, I just couldn't remember if it was an individualized vote or a group.
So the plan is that first meeting in February to talk about what's, what's on there for the board to consider and vote.
Okay, next. We just received two right now, so that all everybody's...
That's all I can add.
No, I got a, I got an email, um, what's today, Monday? It was Monday last week, and it was a whole, um, document that had every single candidate. It was a color page of each person from, what are we, region eight, I think?
Yes, we are.
And so it had, it had all the, there's three regions that were on. But it was a, it was, and that's when it said to me that I needed to let my superintendent secretary know your vote, and you gotta do it by March 5th or something, but...
Can you forward that on to you?
Yeah, I will.
I've never seen that, I saw it just today.
Because otherwise, we did get, like, just one candidate sent something.
I had two candidates.
This was everybody in their region, their picture, how many years they've been on board, a whole statement in front of them. Okay.
If you could please... Yeah, I was just saying, I did not, I got two individuals with their information. I got that. But I did not get that one.
And those two individuals were running for something entirely different, actually. One was running for the chair.
Oh, you're right.
Because I watched the video.
But one's region...
The other one was our...
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Is that the one that I forwarded to you, Cynthia, this morning, that had the attachment?
No, because it was only, it only lists the candidates. It didn't list, like, what?
I forwarded it because it said... It was pretty informative about each candidate.
And I didn't receive that, I didn't receive the information.
Okay. I'll send it to everybody.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, um, our next item is public comments. At this time, anyone in the public may address the board. Um, we did not have, I did not need, first, we didn't have any emails go out or I needed to respond to. And we did not have any from the last board meeting we needed to address. So this time, um, if anyone would like to make a comment, please step forward, state your name, and, um...
Are you timed, set in time? Ooh.
I wasn't finning on speaking, so bear with me, um, but for those that don't know me, um, my name is Bridget Good. I have a senior in the district this year, we won't talk about that, she's going on a state school, um, and a freshman. Uh, it is also my 12th year, um, as a substitute strictly in the Richmond School District, and I happened to glance down and saw your action items for tonight, so I figured, why not? Um, nothing that Mr. Bronson and I haven't talked about before. Um, but in a perfect world, uh, I would love to see, um, one, two, three of our substitutes be brought in-house, Richmond employees, rather than burned out through edge of staff. Um, and in that perfect world, I would love it if there was a bigger, um... What's the word I'm looking for, division? Um, a difference between a building sub and a long-term substitute. Um, this year's been a little different, I've been in plenty of long-term positions, this year's been a little bit different. Um, I've been in either third grade or first grade since the third week of the school year, um, in a classroom, uh, with all the same responsibilities as a classroom teacher. Um, I did fall conferences. I now did my second round of report cards, first in third grade, this time in first grade. Two rounds of NWA, um, pretty much everything that a classroom teacher does. All the classroom teachers get excited when they get there. Snow day text or phone call. Um, however, 10 minutes after I get that, I get the one about, "Sorry, you're not getting paid today because you're not coming to school." Um, I don't like snow days. If we're not there, we don't get paid. Um, there's no personal days, there's no sick days, there's no vacation days, there's no snow days, there's no holidays. Um, so if we don't get the perfect world and we're brought in-house, I would love it if there was a little bit more of a division between a long-term building sub and just a regular, you know, building sub when you're taking on all the responsibilities of a classroom teacher for 10, 12 weeks of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, next item on our agenda is our action items. The first one, looking for a motion for the approval of the 2025-26 Middle School and High School Course Catalog.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2025-26 Middle School and High School Course Catalog presented and discussed at the December 9th, 2024 Board of Education Meeting.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I, for Sarah and Ray, at the meeting where we first, this was presented to us, it would've been in December. Um, and it is, the, the process to approve this changed a little bit this year. We usually didn't do it till February, but, um, for many reasons, the administration was looking to do it, we're doing it a little earlier. And so I had questions, um, last time, and my, one of my questions was, as we looked through the, the course catalog, all the stuff, one of my questions was, um, what about the process of teachers being able to ask for new classes for the year, for the following year or changes to their classes? And the answer was that we didn't have a process. And that's just not accurate, because we do have a process. And last year, in fact, we had two students, or two teachers, um, who gave us new classes, a history class at my school and argumentative writing that we even was at the middle school. Um, so I asked the question about it, and then after the meeting, um, I had a conversation with Brian, and I just said, "Where's the process? Why, we, if we decided we were gonna do something new, why aren't teachers given the chance to, um, put in new classes, that sort of thing?" And, and I did say to him, you know, "It's December 10th, we don't need till January 27th." I think it probably wouldn't be too hard to put something out to the teachers, "What are you looking for?" So then when we got the agenda, um, the, the, our backup stuff, I saw that nothing was different, nothing was changed. And I did have a conversation with Brian, and Brian knows everything that I'm going to say, because I told him I don't pull any punches, I don't surprise him. But, um, I'm, I'm not supporting it because I don't think we followed, no, it's not that I did. I know we didn't follow the process. We did not afford our teachers the chance to come up with a new class for next year, make changes, what have you, and so I'm not supporting it. So I'm, the two of you, and you might've been at that meeting, I don't know if that's the meeting that you...
Yeah, I was, I was at the meeting, but obviously not part of it.
Right, but you were there. So I'm just throwing it out there, and I don't know if there's anyone else that has, uh, conversation or whatever, but I'm not supporting it. I don't think, I don't think you change course on something and not fully do it correctly. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to our teaching staff.
So is your hope that they'll go back, get the feedback from the teachers, and then bring it back then?
Ultimately, what my hope, what I would love to be able to do myself, is to say that we table this in between now and our meeting, which is February, whatever that, in February, that date, come back, give, put it out there. And if there's no teachers that want to put new classes for next year, okay. But put it out there to see...
Give them the opportunity.
And give them the opportunity and come back. We can have a presentation, um, I think I said this to Brian, you can have a presentation because the reality, how I look at it, like, last year, if you guys remember Mr. Yelz, that class, I mean, I remember saying, "I wanna go sit in his history class," you know? It was just, it was really cool. And I just feel as, as a board member, how often are we gonna say no to a new class or a new idea that a teacher wants to? Probably, probably not, you know? There's financial stuff that is involved and all that, but probably not. So what I'd love is that we don't vote, we don't approve it, we table it for two weeks, do the process complete, or don't, don't do the process change this year. Do it for next year and keep the process how it is and give the teachers the chance to do it. So, that's it.
I guess my question is, historically, have we done that before, Brian? Have we laid out there and then voted months later?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know.
We did it two years. Prior to that, we had done through that.
Right. But it's, it doesn't matter whether we did it two years, the fact of the matter is, it's been done, and we didn't give them the opportunity. I just think we missed the boat.
We've only done it once before. Like, no, you said...
And as I said to you, I did, I disagree with you on this. The process is not written, and that is, as I explained to you, um, there is a process that outlines, because the position of the board is, if you guys want, why don't you have to do it? If any teacher has a course get put in that catalog, we'll make it work. But there's a process...
Brian is not even...
But that's exactly what you just stated.
No, I did not.
Yes, it is, you said, "I want two weeks." You have two weeks to table this item, ask staff, "Is there a course?", and bring it back. There's no review of the validity of that course, there's no review of the certification of that court. And that is what I said to you, is we have that process, we articulate, we began putting that in writing. So when I win the lottery and I'm out of here, and Billy wins the lottery and she's out of here, it's in writing, there's a process.
You know that we did have a process, and your...
We have Renee's process.
Your process?
That's it.
Your presentation with me was policy and administrative guidelines. And what I said to you was, there was a process. Teachers would get an email and be able to fill out and do their stuff that, so we can't, we can't, we can't say that we didn't have a process, because we certainly did. Teachers were able, how else did those two teachers last year?
We had a process that the curriculum director implemented.
How else?
Not the district.
It doesn't matter that district implemented.
As the person recommending it, if there's not a process to validate, just because a teacher puts a course in does not mean it's gonna end up in that catalog. There's a lot of things I have to look at. So if I put this out there, a teacher A says, "I want this course," and I don't put it in the catalog, is it gonna be voted down by this board? Because I don't have certifications, I don't have funding, or whatever the case may be.
What I'm saying is, I totally agree with the presentation that was given on what needs to, how they want to do the schedule. I get it. But we missed the boat. We, you said we know we were changing this process since March of 24. So you're telling me between March of 24 and December, there was no, there was no process? We didn't continue the process? The former curriculum director was here in March of 24 through June. New curriculum director comes in, so we, I, I just don't understand how, how it doesn't flow. So the argument of that there's no policy or, um, procedure or guidelines just doesn't fly for me. And guys, listen, if no one else thinks this way, we just move on and vote for it. I just think that we've missed the boat, and if we're going to change things, everybody has to know that the stuff has been changed and how we're going about doing it. And if we knew we were doing it in March of 24, there's no reason that teachers weren't told in March of 24, "You've got till June 30th, whatever, whatever we wanna do the process." That's all I'm saying.
I would agree with Margaret. I would agree with Margaret only because I know during conferences, I'm not her at the high school. I know during conferences, I had asked one of her teachers about a course that I think was changed this year. She's a freshman, so I might be getting it wrong, but Spanish III is now online. And I remember the teacher saying, "It's really difficult for students to be taking, you know, Spanish III online." And I thought he was hopeful to maybe bring it back for next year, but if we didn't even reach out to that teacher to see if that was something that maybe he still wanted to do or didn't wanna do, I don't know if we did or didn't, but that would be good feedback, because, I mean, when you've got the, the teacher of, at least Spanish II, I don't know if he just wanted, um, saying, you know, he would have, he, he might like to bring it back or at least have a conversation about bringing it back to see if it's feasible. I can imagine taking Spanish III online would be very difficult, um, for a sophomore or a junior. So, I don't know, I, I kind of agree with Margaret on that.
So may I ask you a follow-up question? Are you assuming that conversation didn't happen among my administrative team?
I don't know if it did, I, I missed this.
Because our first priority was to put it in person. Again, it's a certification area. I have one Spanish teacher at the high school. I need a section of social study, the person who presented their classes. So in order to do run Spanish III, I have to put it online. We've had the posting for a year out there to hire. So the statement, if you're insinuating that that conversation didn't happen at the administrative level, I find disheartening to my administrative team and I. The teachers have no clue from a scheduling perspective, all the logistics that go into it.
Well, I like, I like to imply here, I would think that's where you were coming from.
I was gonna say, I feel like...
Well, she implied that I didn't have a conversation with the teacher. I had a conversation with Mr. Yelz.
I was, just to clarify, I was piggybacking off of Margaret. I was not here for this meeting, um, December 8th. I did watch, uh, at least a portion of it on video, but I was not here. So hearing Margaret say that, I guess I was taking from what Margaret said, that those conversations or we didn't seek that out. I don't know the conversations that happened with various teachers about various courses. I would prefer if you just informed me instead of being defensive about it, but you can just simply say, you know, "We did do that, thanks for checking." It's no disrespect to any of the administrative team. I would hope those conversations happened, but without you telling me that, I wouldn't know that.
And, and I'm, to throw out the word disrespect is...
And, and I know, to throw out the word disrespect is, is really unfortunate because it's, it's as simple, it's a question when I asked about the process and was told that we didn't have a process. Well, I just went through it last year, that's where I was coming from. I simply asked the question that night at the meeting, I spoke to you after, and when the agenda came, I looked at it, I'm like, nothing's different. So I just said to you, just so you know, I'm not supporting this because I think we dropped the ball.
And I disagree with it, the administrative team responsible for that did not drop the ball.
Of course you did.
I think it's a slap in the face to them personally.
But I, but I'm not trying to slap anyone in the face, but if we previously had.
We did not have a process.
Brian.
Renee had a process.
How can you continue to say that with a straight face?
Where's it writing? There's no, there's no administrative guideline, there's nothing said, this is what we're going to do.
You know what, it's, it's incredible that you're, that the straight face that you're standing.
Tell me.
Yeah. I have one more piece of feedback though, can I jump in on that for this?
Okay. I just want to give other people because I, I would like to make a statement too. Go on, Sarah.
So mine is something unrelated, but I did notice, and again, I did watch this portion of that meeting, but I did notice that some of the middle school classes for high school credit had been removed. I understand where everyone was coming from with it, I would say I disagree with it. I understand the point in that they're coming to the high school with maybe too many credits and then they're getting all of the credits before they, you know, their senior year. While I do understand that, I feel like when you have kids who are advanced or who are motivated, I think we strike while the iron is hot. I love that my daughter got to take in eighth grade and seventh grade, I mean, we took away seventh grade algebra for, and I know that has to do with testing and where they're at, when, when it's time to take testing. I guess we'll see because I have one child who did get to do it in seventh grade and I'll have one child that doesn't get the opportunity, although he is well above averages on his NMPA and all of the testing that he's doing. I do think that's unfortunate, I would not like to see that moving forward, I would not like to see any other middle school classes for high school credit being caught from our catalog. I think, again, we need to strike when the iron is hot. And we do have some amazing teachers in the system, don't get me wrong, I've run into so many that I couldn't even name. But there are some that go above and beyond more than others. And when you have kids who are slightly advanced, it can be challenging for a teacher in a regular class with all sorts of learning levels to challenge the ones who are coming up as advanced. So if you have a class specifically for those kids who are on task, I mean, my, both of my kids, they have done very well for themselves, but they struggle when they're in a class with their peers who maybe aren't where they're at academically and those kids are off task, they're up, they're disruptive, they're causing, you know, issues and the teacher has to deal with them and it is taking away from some of our higher achievers. So I would not like to see those classes removed moving forward, that's just my personal opinion.
Well, and I'm, I really apologize if this, this went a direction. I know, but I, we've got other people in the comments, so we've got to make it short. That's not the direction. I, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to be. Sandy, did you have something?
I was just going to, I was just going to ask, I guess. When a teacher is passionate about a program and they want to start a program, wouldn't they, wouldn't they contact their administrators, like, wouldn't they do that on their own? I don't know, like, why would they have, like, I don't know that it is necessary for, like, an email or whatever to go out to ask them if there's anything that they're interested in. I don't know.
Well, that was going to be my question, if the teacher did have an idea and proposed to Brian, would you say it's too late, the catalog's already been approved by the board, there's no way we can add it, maybe make it to the next one? Or I'm sorry, Kelly.
No, what should happen is, Candace, that should go to the administrator, the administrator should know in the building where we're at in this process. And so if, if you were a teacher who wanted, I agree with Sandy's comment, if you wanted something to do, I would think it would be partly my responsibility to step up and say, hey, I really like this course, this is what's had, what I want to do with it. Okay, so can I have the floor for just a minute? Because I have some background knowledge on some of this and I want to share it. Is that okay?
Yeah.
First off, as Brian stated, you just don't start a course. There is a lot of background work that has to be done to having a course. So that conversation, Sandy, like you were saying, okay, first off, when I was an administrator, we did do this, what you guys are talking about. I did send an email out like in September to say, hey, we're going to be looking at the course catalog, let's have some conversations if you want a new course for next year. I know that Billy is working currently with our teachers and most of these courses are elective courses that we're talking about here. These are not courses that are in our curriculum that are typically required from the state. So you have to take a look at it, we needed, we haven't, this is the first time as a district we've even looked at our elective courses to see if there's any overlap.
The history class was an elective class?
Not the history, but it is elective, it would have been elective, Margaret.
Yeah, it depends on how many credits you have to then take it after your three-year certification, you, you, you don't.
It's an elective course because you're only required to have world history, US history and the government and ECON.
Then after that, it's all.
Yeah. So we have never, until this year, and Billy's kind of stepped in the middle of this, we have never looked at our elective courses to see, you know, if we had computer in a long time, let's put it this way. So we have computers in middle school, high school and, and wherever, is there any overlapping? Are we teaching something in, in each one that maybe we need to look at? So they take time to develop, I just want to stress that. I don't, I would like, in my opinion, for tonight, we approve this catalog with the caveat that we look at putting something in writing or something that will identify a process so that we have it no matter if Brian or Billy are gone and we have it in place, because I don't believe we can develop a course in two weeks. There's just too much involved to put it together, to check it out, to see if there's certifications needed in it, I just, I just don't think it's feasible to do.
I, I would disagree with you. That's why we should have done the process correctly first place.
So, and, and given that it wasn't, right, I mean, that didn't happen, right, Margaret? Of course, we can see that. But, um, like Deb said, I have been meeting with the, all the different elective departments separately and so that process will each have a total of three days between, between now it started in January through, we'll finish up, the very first week of April will be the last group, but most groups will be done in March. And so for the groups that did have, there's been two that have brought my initial two middle school courses that were, you know, interested in, you know, if that email would have gone, I mean, whatever that process was before that I can't speak to, happened that they would have, you know, probably went into requesting the course. So there's been some background conversation, there actually has been. So I agree with Deb in that, I hope that, that the board is able to approve it because on one hand, I know that the domino effect that that would have on high school is that the high school scheduling plan, as they've already kind of put in place, they would have a three-night impact on them right now. And like you said, I don't know that we would be in a whole different place two weeks from now to be able to put the classes in and know that they were classes that were the right fit, that we had the right curriculum for, that we could afford the resources for all those things that will be part of that process that we're kind of putting the final finishing touches on. And we'll do, we'll use officially and systematically from now on, once that's presented and approved. Given those pieces, again, those conversations are happening with the elective teachers and were happening, it had been a little before, just kind of side conversations before the official meetings were occurring. I do think that if we would be able to consider as part of that process, I would like to include an option to pilot a course, rather than maybe going for a full approval and the full, full thing, a teacher could have the option to pilot it up for a year beforehand. And I do think, given the conversations that I've had with the two groups that are interested in implementing a class, if we could give them the opportunity to pilot, which I think they would be willing to do by the end of these meetings that were happening, which will be beyond two weeks from now, but will certainly be by March, they could develop and finish developing a pilot, which we could approve, which could be something, you know, have a conversation with counseling, with administrators in the buildings, those are doable. So it wouldn't be quite the same as the full approval, but it would be at least something to allow them to start to experience those classes. And like you said, most likely after that pilot year, if it's something crazy, it would probably be approved, right? So it would give them the opportunity to step into it, hopefully work out all the kinks and then by next year, that official process will in place, the email will go at the right time, everything will be in order, so they'll be able to be approved at that time, but this will give them a little bit of room to be able to start stepping into it because there wasn't a process that really happened this year.
So if you're piloting, explain to me how that works, if you're approving a course catalog and they're going to start scheduling at whatever, how, where does the piloted, piloted.
So piloted class isn't officially in the course catalog, so you run it as a pilot, as a test run, as a practice course that maybe after that year, we realize, oh, that wasn't, the kids really didn't like it, that's not a good goat, we should not put that in the course catalog, or, oh my gosh, the kids are begging for this class, that was a hit, we should probably do two sections, right? So it gives us that time to kind of learn a little bit before it's official. Again, I don't know if most teachers will take that route in the future, but at least this year, it could be an opportunity.
But how, but approving the course catalog, where does, where does that piloted, if it's not in the course catalog and we start scheduling, how do they, do they take that class?
So we, we'll have to have it done still before that, so again, I will admit it would be a little bit more difficult for high school, but at this point, I have not had any high school, and I don't know if I'm pandering this, but that is, no one has come to me at all with any high school requests for new courses, it's been only middle school, but their timeline of scheduling would still work.
I guess my question would be, what, what classes are we potentially looking at?
There was one in technology and it's already a class for like a steam class for the sixth grade, looking at moving it to include the seventh and eighth grade components essentially, so an extension of that that already exists. And for the theater, middle school has tended to be popular and looking at the theater program at high school, it's expanding, there's some conversation about adding a second year of theater as a potential class. So it's not, neither of them are brand new, if you will, they're really extensions of classes that are here.
I wanted to ask, and you say that these piloting programs aren't as frequent in places like the high school, do you think that is because there is no process? Is, is there a way that we can just compromise, in, in a blatant way, let it slide this time and then just eventually?
That's kind of, you're kind of thinking the right thing there, Joe. I mean, it's right, like, there's, the timing was off this year and so it's really important that we get the course guys approved so that the high school can really get into their scheduling, like they need to get into each did that get laid out.
And of course, I, I can't vote on anything, but I mean, I, I, I respect the points of view, it's just, I, I mean, I would argue if, if you don't vote on something like this, what are the risks that you now, like, we're falling behind, we're not getting things done? So we make the exception, but then of course still take into the count that like, it'll come eventually, you know, we, we said, oh, let it slide this time around and then, you know, as time goes on, we meet in the middle, you know, everyone kind of gets what they wanted in a way.
Like I said, I would just like to see, I say we pass it and then make sure that before the year's out, we have something in writing or something that, again, no matter who's in as far as administration or whatever, we have something that as a board that we've agreed to and, or that we've seen and we know we have a process. I, the biggest piece I, I want is I want to be, I want our staff to be, have the opportunity for input. I think that's very important, it provides ownership, it, it provides growth for our staff. So that's the, that to me is the piece that I struggle with as far as how the process or, or the process this year, and I just want to make sure we have that.
Go back to your question, Margaret, about the pilot, oftentimes when you do a pilot, you target a group of kids, it might be a group of kids that are interested in that topic and you talk to them about it and create a section of it. Previous middle school administration did this all the time, look at the course catalog that I inherited, most of those courses never came to the board for approval, they just started courses up, that wheel with one. And that was a perfect example.
So would the pilot programs have to be approved by, by the board though?
Pilot programs typically do not come to the board. Because we would be looking at internally, where would be, if there's a cost, where do we pay for the cost? And again, it's in scheduling, if it's a computer class or a tech class, something else may not be running in order to bring this pilot course in, what is that domino effect do?
Which is the nice thing about having the meetings like that, set, you have all the technology teachers in the room together, they love the standards there, I mean, it's a vertical line with them and working on, it's really, I mean, they're doing a great job and it's great work and this is really, like, it's just like the timing was off this year. But that, you know, again, part of that is, you know, with me coming as a new curriculum director, I wasn't ready to start those meetings day one in September, right? And so we started them after the first of the year and we're trying to go through this because we can. Again, I think coming out of that, we're going to have a really great plan for how we can tweak some things and provide some classes and, you know, figure out exactly what to add, allowing the option to pilot this coming year for some of these ideas that are coming up in this group, I think will be a really good first step. And then by the time, you know, we're here, this time next year and this conversation, we'll be able to really have a great vertical line program in all of the electives, you know, we might have several new adoption and we'll request our adopted classes next year, be pleasant as well too.
So would the board have to approve that, not the particular pilot, but would they have to approve allowing pilots to occur?
I believe your board policy allows the district to have under the curriculum section to run pilots and then it only becomes the board action if it's going to be a permanent course to be offered.
Okay.
Does it have to do with the cost too?
Yeah, there's, there's several factors, like typically on a pilot, you're looking at how you're going to measure if there's a success. Sometimes it's a pre-imposed survey from the kids, whether they liked it, there's a cost analysis, like, yeah, what are the one-time expenses versus consumable yearly costs? Curriculum, what, what content or what standards are you teaching in the pilot course? So those would be conversations to have with the individual teacher if we were going to do a pilot.
How long does it take to get reasonable data from a pilot classes? Are they only expected to run one year or do they last more than one year, like two years?
Two years, semester or the year, it's usually a one.
That's only, then that's all you need to determine, okay, students want or do not want the class?
Again, depending on the pilot course, if it's a quarter semester, full year course, you're going to have to at some point gather a snapshot at that time. So if it's a semester and our process kind of ends before spring break, gather the data at the beginning of the year in September and then some type of data collection in, before the board meeting in December, so that if it's a recommendation put in the catalog, then you've got that, you did this pilot, here's the data that goes with it.
I have a horse tit, but not related to, to that. I had watched the meeting as well because I wasn't here, but I went in December, but I agree with Sarah regarding pulling those classes from the middle school. As the, my two older, my older two are high flyers, Jackson's another, another pack of stuff. But my two high flyers, one has had the benefit of, he's 16 and he's going to walk across the graduation stage at 16 because I bumped him. And the other one is expressing that frustration this year as a freshman, being in, she's got a couple of high fly classes and a couple of classes that are normal and those normal ones, just like you mentioned, she's come home frustrated on a daily basis of the teacher having to deal with the behaviors of, mom, I just want to do this. You're looking like the classroom snitch child. She's going to the teacher and being like, this person's doing this, this person's doing that, but she's so frustrated with the behavior, she's trying to help, but at the same time, there's that frustration and so I, I appreciate, you know, by the time they're in junior, they've passed every class, they're technically going to be done. But we need something for those kiddos to be able to have that ability to want to keep fly, high flying and I'm glad we have, like, for example, the early college program to at least get them on that route, but we can use that route if we're also having those higher flyers that are doing that stuff in seventh and eighth grade because that's, that's huge. Because I've seen a trajectory question on both my kids and they've both taken kind of different routes with similar routes and, yeah, that's really rough.
I know that this isn't really what we're talking about, but I actually disagree, just FYI, because I, my kid also did the high school classes in middle school and then I had to get a tutor when she was going to be taking tests for college, to get into colleges because she hadn't had it for two years. So I don't know, I mean, I understand why they would maybe, you know, So I don't know, I mean, I understand why they would maybe, you know, I guess be lower for lack of a better term, but I feel like, I don't know what's better, you know what I mean? Like, because at the end, it was like, like I said, I had to pay for a tutor because she hadn't had math in three years.
Well, that's a difference, too, with the early college, where like, taking, like, if it's offered as an AP, as a smaller district, we don't have as many AP options as bigger districts, but that's, that you got to continue it on or go the college route and being able to take those, probably those elementary algebra classes at college level, but yeah, you could, I could see where that could be a problem in placement testing going to where the college.
Just going to say, the SAT test, when we go through it, look at it, there are so many algebra questions in there, and what we found is Algebra I. So what we found is our kids hadn't had Algebra I since eighth grade or seventh grade. Yeah, and so then when they were going to test, they didn't do well on it because honestly, they're in advanced and they didn't know, and I know that was in our conversation we had when we talked about moving some of that back into the high school, but something that we, yeah.
Two different perspectives.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on this item?
I don't know, Candace.
Candace, did you get your question answered?
I mean, once we solidify it, you know, if somebody were to approach you and ask, and ask something, I mean, kind of soften and softly talk about it a little bit, is they would turn it to a pilot, but would you, well, I guess the administrator that they would go to, would they say, sorry, it's been approved, you know, we tabled this for next year, or would they entertain it?
I don't think there's any administrator that's going to say no, it's going to be a conversation of all the parties involved, from me, from staffing and budgetary, to Billy from a curriculum and resource, to the building principal from getting into the scheduling aspect and targeting the kid. There's no one person, even in the process that Billy talked about, that trying to formalize that process, there's no one person that says no other than the board. It's a piece that everybody comes to from their lens, to see if it's what they do.
So they would go to their administrator, then if they didn't get anywhere from that, they would go to Billy?
I mean, because this would be a question, I'll give you a four instance, let's say assume it's a tech, we've already got a tech, does this mean some other teacher's going to have to pick up a tech class? Well, are we increasing the balloon, are we taking kids out of one class, to put them into the pilot, and now potentially puts a teacher with not a full-time schedule? And I can do that, I mean, I can put it with 100% what's his, wow, if there's a potential, we won't have teachers with full-time schedule. We've had it in the past, it happened when we didn't have a, a strong CTE program at the high school from the business side, and we were losing kids in that class, and I was forced to give that teacher a part-time schedule, they left. You know, you get someone in there who sells and markets a program, no pun intended, and builds that program, it's like culinary, we had a wait list, we have the esports and computer program, we have a wait list, so.
You got to understand, our numbers, we can only have so many classes, because if you draw from one or pull from one, it pulls from a note, and then it affects the whole schedule and the whole process. So you really, that's why I'm saying, I don't think in two weeks we can sit down and just say, oh yeah, we can run this course, I just, I don't believe it can happen, there's so much involved. And I did, I do understand, I realize that, I was just throwing it out there, but you are absolutely correct. Okay, any other discussion on this topic? Okay, so we need to vote on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next item for approval is the, I need a motion for the approval of a laptop for television and broadcast CTE program.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of 22 laptops for a total not to exceed $18,150 as outlined in the attached documentation for which funding from the general fund, section 61A, 1, vocational education funds is authorized.
Thank you, any discussion? Brian, what happens to the ones who are replaced?
If there's no value in them, they are surplus, there's a, there's a, any technology where there's a, there's a, lifespan or drawdown, I don't know what the value, if there's no value, then they, if they were paid for CP, CTE funds, they stay in, they stay in a storage room till the CT says we can, we can get rid of them. And larger districts that have larger, they have warehouses full of CTE for their stuff, because they can't physically get rid of them, but if there's a value, then the money that's sold goes back into that CT program, because they were paid for the CTE. Would there be the opportunity to re, maybe repurpose them for another class? The district would have to reimburse the CTE, those funds, because they were paid for the CTE backups, there, those rules are a little stringent.
Any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, Candace, Margaret?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Next item for action, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of lunch aids and substitute rates. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the lunch aids and substitute personnel rate of pay as outlined in the attached documentation. Do I have support? Support, thank you, any discussion?
I actually, I kind of did want to talk about the long-term substitution rate versus the building substitution rate. I do notice that in the language, it does say, the expectation that the long-term substitute would assume the duties of the teacher. I do kind of feel like maybe if they are in that long-term position and it's through a holiday or snow day, that maybe we consider giving them something, and since they are taking on all of those duties, the way that the language is, I'm assuming that'd be taking papers home and grading and making plans, daily plans and...
So just to clarify, the language that's in the asterisk regarding long-term is not new, that was board blueprinting board back in August of '23 with the rates. We basically have three substitute rates. We have the daily rate substitute, which is $135, which just a few years ago was $90, $95 a day, and we raised that. With COVID, excuse me, the second one is a long-term, which would have been prior to COVID, that's what we would have paid as someone at a different rate if they assumed, assumed maternity leave, if a teacher was sick for a period of time, anything more than 30 days than we would. When COVID hit, we had building substitutes, and just recently in this past budget, back in the conversation in December, the board continued. The reason why this is before you is all these rates don't start until next school year, it's the recommendation, nothing starts now, as we begin building in the budget process. So the question's going to come to this board, are we going to continue building substitutes again? Because it's, it's a cost that the board assumes or in the budget process, so, so you know, if the conversation is about providing sick time and personal time, and the board wants to bring back their substitutes in-house, there's a domino effect, because you no longer have an outside agency putting the subs in the system for the system, we're going to have to have someone devoted to regulate the substitutes, much like the MISD, who's the only district off the top of my head that does substitutes in-house, they have someone that also works with that, but there's a cost. Currently, we pay about 17% to 19% for edge of staff on top of this, if you're going to bring them back in-house, we're looking at probably 32% on top of this, if it's going to be in-house call, plus snow days, sick days, all that stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that none of these people who have any of these positions don't deserve it, but the regulation of sick days and all that falls within the employer. So if we want to bring them back in-house, and I can bring, like we did when we brought the custodians back in-house, I can bring a proposal saying this is what it would cost, but it's going to be significantly more from a budgetary perspective, bringing them back in-house than through a third term. So the question on the, one I said, there's a question's going to come, prior to COVID, that building sub wasn't there. COVID came and we added that, and we extended it this year when all the funding ran out, and we absorbed that cost of the building, so it potentially could go back to just two, like we've done in the past.
But the long-term substitute, the, the idea of the gap between the long-term substitute and the building substitute, they're paying, the long-term sub, it come in and had teachers off on leave after so many days, the district has to hire, and doesn't that have more to do with how the teacher's contract works with that somewhere?
There's a, there's a, if you have someone in a position for 150 days, if there's an opening, you're obligated to offer them, if they're certified to teach in that position. So there's not an automatic that we're going to hire them, but there is after so many days if they're certified and there's an opening, it's part of the teacher tenure act, a lot of that has to do with if they're, if they are district employed. The, this group, and I don't, I don't mean this to sound negative, because they are, they are, they are part of the backbone of what makes our schools run, so I don't, please don't take it, but they're not our employee. If the board wants to make them our employee, we can do that, but there's other costs that goes along with it that I'd have to, you know, project out to you. Now, all these subs you've got, it's an estimate, I don't know, like, for instance, there's a sub rate on here for a culinary, I couldn't tell you if we actually had a culinary sub in the days that she had, so it's, if someone picks it up, our sub pool, just like every district, is very, very thin, there's not a whole lot there.
Okay, so then the thought process, though, can a, can a building, one of our three building substitutes become a long-term sub? The answer to that is yes, right?
I believe that's what, that's what happened in this.
Moves into that spot, right?
Instead of, instead of finding another sub, they moved the building sub for that teacher for since November, I think November 19th or something like that. So they've been, that would have been a long-term sub that we would have put it, but they put it.
Took them out of the building substitute spot to be long-term.
So that would don't have a building sub then?
So then, we're, just let me finish my thought, so the rationale between if I'm, I'm a building substitute and when I go into a long-term, can there be a gap in that type, like you get, like you get a bonus, you get 20 more dollars a day.
Because they're actually doing more work.
Something like that, if we're moved, because I look at our building subs, they, they're, they're out, that's the whole reason we, we kept it, right, guys? Because we wanted, we wanted to keep those people because they know our kids, they helped us through COVID, so we wanted to keep it. So would there be a way to bonus it out or something?
I guess that's what I...
Yes, because they're not even making like lesson plans and, you know, they're doing other things.
Yeah, if you want to get paid by the teacher, be a teacher.
No, that's just my question, to me, you're, you're being bumped up almost, or?
To be a, to be a long, you're saying to be a long-term sub?
Yes.
Yeah, we put a number down there. I mean, that, that, I don't, I don't mean to sound flippant, so forgive me, but that was not my intent, but these are arbitrary numbers that, based on what other districts are, there are some districts that I see that's been paying $300 for a retired teacher to come back.
Right, I, I don't have a problem with, with this right here, I'm saying, if it's something that you work on and bring back and come up with a, like I just said, a bonus or something, if I'm going from being a building sub to now I'm in a long-term, instead of $150, maybe I'm going to get $175 a day, something, something like that.
Okay, so let me add a, a bunch of that, I like what you're saying, but what if we aren't, what if we don't bring in, or what if we don't have a building sub to do that? What, last year, how many predators and employees? Because then where would it come from? That would come from then our edge of staff or whatever, is that what hap, where does our long-term subs?
Put that into edge of staff, right?
Sure.
A building sub is also hired, edge of staff, they're not a, yes, oh, see, I understood a building.
No, all we voted was we wanted, we wanted those staffs to stay.
Yeah, I was thinking that they were originally employed, though, as opposed to...
And where I'm coming from, you're, you're right, long-term, someone goes out on maternity leave, and goes out on edge of staff, and we get...
Could be who else.
Okay? But I'm saying if our, how we feel, our building people, if they now, because it has happened before, so they move into, they're now that long-term, whoever's on maternity leave or that medical, whatever, a bump.
Okay, I think, oh, I'm sorry, I think we should, I think our long-term subs should make more money for us, period.
That's what I was going to say, why does it have to be a building sub that moves into that?
Because, exactly, because your building sub and your daily sub, they're doing the same thing, they're usually typically in a classroom, they're hopping in and out, they're not doing lesson plans, they're not doing report cards, they're not doing...
Well, some classroom events, but not classroom events.
Yeah, conferences, so to me, they should have a little bit higher wage, because they are doing a lot more.
I have a question, what constitutes a long-term sub? Is there an amount of days that makes them consider long?
It's a 30 consecutive days.
Okay.
And that's used, that's typically generally because of FMLA and a leave that a teacher's taking.
So why couldn't it just be all, if you're a long-term sub, you make this X amount, and it's more than the other ones? Wouldn't it be that easy?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I, I, if I'm a building sub and I get put into a long-term, I'm not going to...
You automatically...
You're saying it's long-term, yes.
Correct, yeah, so anybody who falls into that category would get paid a higher...
No matter where they're coming from.
Correct, because really, if you're a long-term sub, you're doing, you're doing your job.
You're still doing the same pieces.
But just for the point of, the building substitute and the daily substitute, I don't think should be the same, because the reality is, those building, they are in our buildings, obviously, they come on them, that's, that's...
And they're also doing other things when they're not subbing, too.
So maybe we have like a three-tiered system?
A three-tier.
You've got your teacher, your mini-teacher, and your many, many-teacher.
I just think they're more valuable.
Teacher cadet level one.
Yeah, there you go.
And it shows a commitment to the build, to the district, if you become a building, there's a commitment.
So do we want to...
Is it out of the question to even offer them snow days if we have snow days to pay, pay for, or vacation, or not vacation, sorry, like when we're on breaks, they're not getting paid while we're on break either?
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't agree with that, because that's just, but...
I would need to see the cost in that before I could...
Yeah, I maybe want to know if we, if we have a snow day, because the reality is, you may have no snow days, you would have six snow days, so I would want to look at, but as for being paid over break, no, because I don't agree with that, but a snow day?
What's the difference?
I kind of see it like a contract employee, someone who's contingent.
Yeah, but like, what's the difference, I mean, if they're still doing, like, say, grading papers over spring break rather than over like, where, like, if you're still overtaking the responsibilities of a teacher, what's the difference? If you're not at school and you're still doing teacher things, wouldn't it, regardless, shouldn't you get the pay? I mean, if you're going to pay them for the snow days, why, why just not include break?
Well, because I guess I just look at, if it's spring break and you're the, you're the long-term sub, you'll probably, you'll probably get things written for it, you go on spring break somewhere, that, that's only where I'm coming from.
I guess that's fair.
I'm thinking of paying vacation, that's, that's what I mean.
I just have another question, too, because this is just out of me not knowing, does a long-term sub have to have the same qualifications as a classroom teacher with a teaching certificate?
No.
So that to me would be just a differing viewpoint to say, the teachers have this, achieved this level of education, they kind of get the perks with it, I do consider the long-term subs maybe more of like a contingent, where they are making more, but it is kind of an as-needed, and that's...
That starts to get all, it's like, be like a huge contract. I just don't think it's necessary.
I just have another question to clarify. Because this is just out of me not knowing. Does a long-term sub have to have the same qualifications as a classroom teacher, with a teaching certificate?
No.
So that, to me, would be just a differing viewpoint to say, the teachers have this, achieved this level of education, they kinda get the perks with it. I do consider the long-term subs maybe more of like a contingent, where they are making more, but it is kind of an as-needed, and that's just the role of a contingent contract employee. Um, I've been a contract employee in my profession, and when I didn't go to work that day, I didn't get paid. It is what it is. Um, if my clients didn't show up, I didn't get paid that day. No different than a hairdresser or mindful therapist. It just is what it is. I would be definitely supportive of a three-tier system, but probably not the, the days.
Yeah, I feel like it's, you know, that also makes it look more attractive to, you know, become a teacher, you know? And then, like, their job.
Absolutely. Yes.
Well, we already do have the three-tiered system. Are you talking three-tiered in the sense a long-term substitute makes more?
Makes more, yes. Three-tier, like, you get paid more...
The building, like, yeah, you have the long-term...
The more commitment, the more you get.
The building, and then the daily.
And so, say someone's filling in for a position as a long-term teacher, and the teacher comes back. They're filling in for someone who are returning, they're back to a building sub. You...
You, 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 you go back, yes.
Because you are not doing...
Filling that.
Yeah. Not doing it.
Assuming the two needs of the teacher.
So, $175?
Can I ask you not to put a rate, and you put a stipend at the end of their long-term? And here's the reason why.
Okay.
Logistically implementing it, there are many people's hands in the pot. And if it's not coded right, we're gonna do a lot of payroll corrections.
Okay.
Where I know who the long-term people are, that when the long-term's completed, the teacher, some value of, here's a thank you, or whatever you wanna call it, for doing that long-term, it's kind of a bonus.
Or could it be X to the, X? I, I like the idea of bonus, so maybe, like, not just a flat rate of, like, this much, but like, X per day. Like, you're saying you would prefer it to be like $175. So that's like $25 a day. So...
So take that amount and then the stipend.
30 days, you know, you're gonna get that amount.
Or, yeah. If, but if you say long-term...
Salient amount.
If you say...